Pike County Town Hall Meeting, Center Point Cafeteria, February 6, 2025.
Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for allowing us to meet together like this in this free country. And we pray that you would bless it for us. And we pray that you would lead all of us government officials in the way that you would have your will be done. And we pray that you would keep blessing this country and keep blessing the best county in the state, in my opinion, Pike County. And we pray that you would bless us as we leave here. Christ name we pray. Amen. Let's have an act of, uh, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, y'all. Thank y'all for everybody coming tonight. This is the reason I wish we had a whole room full of people. You know, I think people need to know what goes on in local government. They have the right, if they pay taxes, they have the right to know what we do with their money, you know, how we spend it, everything. And that's the reason I'm having these meetings, is just be transparent. And I think every level of government ought to be transparent. I want to thank everybody for coming. Like I said before, I wish this whole room was full with everybody with questions. It wouldn't bother me to stay here till midnight. It might other people, but it wouldn't bother me. I'll start off with elected officials and their jobs, but to let you know, first of all, Lila Ryder, our treasurer, was not able to be here tonight. She's got a meeting in Little Rock, and we'll miss her. But if y'all don't mind starting off.
Hi. I'm not gonna stand up because these tables are really hard to get out of. But I'm Serena Williams. I'm a circuit clerk. And three of my job duties are recording land records, filing court documents, jury management, and waiting repair, and attend circuit court. So prepared to lock in for that.
Stacy Stewart, Pike County Assessor. My office is responsible for discovering, listing, and valuing all property in the county, which includes real estate and personal property. If we don't do our dogs correctly, then the county has nothing, the schools are less funded, it hits everybody.
I'm Travis Hill, sheriff and tax collector, and y'all know what I do.
I'm Randy Edwards. I'm the Pike County Clerk and probate clerk. My office, we do payroll, HR department, we pay the bills for all of the offices. We do probate court, we do voter registration, and we conduct elections on the federal, state, local, and school levels.
And I've got two JP's. I want to tell them thank you for coming. All right, next thing is, well, I told you the reasons for having these meetings. We'll just start off with the paid tax receipts. Okay, right here, I blacked out the names, so, you know, these are ones that I pulled from the collector's office. If you'll look right here, you'll see where, how your tax money is broken down. So if you'll look here, you know, you've got South Pike County. This is their amount. You drop them down. Now, this is within a city, so you'll see how the county road is split into two. You've got county road full, county road split, and this only happens in cities. You'll look, you'll look right out here, you combine those two, it's $125.48, and that is 2.85% of the total, $4,389.22. That's how much the county road department gets. Here's another example. Okay, this is the second one. This is Kirby School District. Once again, now, this, this number is based on how many meals, you know, the, the school district has. And if you'll scroll on down, you'll see county road full, $118.62, out of a total of $3,524.53. And I've got some other examples if I can get to them. Here's one. This is another Kirby county road full, $64.78, out of $1,940.70. I think that's the last one. So basically, you see how the millage breaks down. And Johnny, you want to elaborate any on that?
On the millage? The city, the city pays the county millage, and then the city pays in addition on top of it for the cities. The city of Glenwood, city of North Carolina, city of Iowa, they'll pay an extra millage. But that's, that's just the way it is for counties. Cities still pay, they pay double, not quite double, but they pay more. But that's just the way it's set up. A lot of the county millage, or sales tax comes in through the interest. Don Baker did that, got it approved from the taxpayers. The cities, or the county road gets the money from, from the interest, and then they have it from the landfill. They break it down. But the fire departments gets, I think, 15%, oh, hold me on that. I think 15%, and the county road, I think, gets 30% of the interest, which is substantial, because we have work, I have work, and so does Jerry's work. Am I in trouble?
No, Mark, I can hear you.
You know, Jerry, Jerry sits on the budget committee as well as I do. But we try to save money and put back, and, and a lot of the interest income comes back in a percentage basis to come back to the county road and the, the fire departments. It's where most of that extra money comes from the landfill account. That's basically, there's a lot of fingers in the pie, but it's, the county road does not get a lot of money from the taxpayers. Most of the money comes back from the turnback money from the state. There's a percentage of that comes back, and then they, that's how it is funded. The judge is supposed to be doing part of it.
Well, sometimes some, some people don't understand, you know, exactly how much money we get. And that's, you know, that's one of the reasons I'm doing this. They, I've had people literally walk up and talk about, you know, bank accounts that we had millions of dollars in, and that's just not true. It's just not factual. And that's one of the reasons I'm having this, is to let people know. And a lot of people that I've asked if they looked at their tax receipt, you know, about how much county road gets from it, and they've never even noticed this box down there. They've never looked at it in depth and learned how much county road gets. It's not an excuse. It's just the way it is. I mean, all counties across the state are like this. And I think every, every county in the state has this little box that explains where your tax dollars go.
My office and the collector's office gets a lot of calls wanting to know how much they paid to their school district, or how much they paid for this or that. Most of those calls, we transfer to the collector, because they are the responsible party for that. But we do get a lot of calls about that. We tell them, you know, there's a, there's a box on your tax statement, and we'll explain it all.
Now, we'll go to the road budget. Let me know if you can see that well. Is it pretty clear out there? Okay. So we'll, I'm not gonna go through every little line item. They're kind of broke up into groups. This first group, if you'll notice right out here where the arrow is, this is salaries. So this is, this is the salaries that the road department gets paid. This is social security matching, the retirement, the insurance, the performance comp. All of that is what this, this comes out of, is this, this line item right here, or this group. And in this group, that's, there's not a bit of money that I can touch throughout the year, or else nobody in the road department is paid. You know, if you take full money out of that, then you've got somebody that's not getting a paycheck. And that, that amount right there is $1,0348.96. Now, okay, I'm getting a little ahead of myself. Let me go back to my budget. We need to talk about where the, where the county road money comes from. So starting off, you have highway revenue turnback, which is $1,601,380. County property tax relief, $28,000. Severance tax, $16,085.67. Federal flood and national forest, $17,000. Local property taxes current, $172,722. Gilt residue, $300. Sell culverts, $75,000. Interest, $200,000. And the beginning balance is $650,000. Now, that beginning balance is what's left over from the year previous. So like 20, what I have left over in 2024 rolls into 2025. The total amount is $2,760,487.67, less 10%, which is the 10% that the state requires you to hold back. You don't have any choice in that. That's $276,487.77, which comes out with an available balance of $2,484,438.90. And that's, that's, that's the total amount for the county road budget for 2020, 2025. Now, we'll get back to this. So, so you just use round numbers. You've used $1 million right off the top right there, basically. So you're at $1,400,000. All right? You go on down, and if you can see these line items good, I'll just hit the high spots. Fuel, now, this isn't the total amount of fuel that we use. This is what the county budgets for money, because we still have state turnbacks, turnback money that we get from the tax that's sold in the county. And that's a little bit more. But this line, this line item right here is $150,000. Okay, tires and tubes, $50,000. Scroll on down, parts and repairs, $170,000. And I'm hoping, crossing my fingers, that that's enough for the entire year for our parts and breakdowns for all of our equipment. Because last year, I had to pull from another one of these line items to transfer money over there to make it to the end of the year. One of the reasons is we just have a lot of wore-out equipment. It's just, it's just the way it is. Maintenance service contract, $60,000. Oops, go back. All right, right here, $250,000. That's for asphalt. That's money that I can use to, to chip and seal roads. And I can't use all of it, because we also have, we also have coal mix that we, that we, that we patch potholes with. And right now, we have a lot of potholes that we, that we have to patch. So that uses up quite a bit of that money. Culvert pipe, $75,000. Gravel and sand, that's my gravel fund that I buy any kind of gravel out of. That's $60,000. All right, we'll move to the next page. That, that whole group amounts to $893,500. You go on down, this next group is called other services and charges. There's not any really big amounts in that. It goes anywhere from the highest is $28,000, down to, say, $10,000. That's electricity, gas, water, lease machinery equipment, so on and so forth. We go to the next page. The next one, big one, is machinery and equipment. I put $200,000 in there this year. That's all I've got, to buy machinery and equipment. If I, if I need some more for that, I have to pull it for another one of these line items that then is dropped down further. The next one is vehicles, $115,000. I put that much in there to buy some trucks. Last year, I bought one truck. We had $40,000 in that line item last year, and I bought one truck. The next one is county matching advance. That's the money. In any grant we get, we have to have a matching amount. So whether it's 75, 25, 90, 10, that, that lower number is what we have to put in for grants. And that's where that money comes out of, is that. That group total amounts to $427,500. And then down below that, you have debt service, which is like equipment that we bought through a bank or whatever. That's, that's our payments for that. I don't really believe in making, paying interest, because in my opinion, that's wasted money. If we can buy it outright, that's the way I like to do it. Sometimes, you just can't do it. You have, you know, you have to make a payment. But I'm trying to get to where we're not paying any interest, and we roll that money back and use for the county instead of paying banks and, banks and debt services. So, any questions so far? Yes, sir.
Would it be better to lease it than it would be to buy it?
Well, every, every salesman from Caterpillar, John Deere, any of them, have, I've talked to them about leasing, and they said, "I'll be straight up honest with you. We'll lease whatever you want, but you're getting the wrong end of the deal on this." And they're, they're the salesman, you know, they're the ones making the sales. And they tell you outright that it is not good business to lease, that you're better off buying. Any other questions? We'll go to, I'll tell you about, this is just some of our machinery that we have. We were talking about machinery and equipment. So we have, we have five dump trucks in the county. These are all Bob trucks. We have one other one that we, we've got a trailer we can pull, but it doesn't, it, these are the, these are the workhorses of our dump trucks. We have a 2012 Mack dump truck with 330,944 miles. We have a 2007 Mack dump truck. This mileage is 574,981 miles. We have another 2007 Mack dump truck that has a mileage of 522,681. We have a 2018 Volvo dump truck with 182,218 miles. And then our newest one is a 2021 Mack dump truck with 130,402 miles. So you see that we've got two that are gonna have to be replaced pretty soon. I've got one on order from Mack. I ordered it last January, and I'm hoping, crossing my fingers, we get it in May. That's how hard it is to get trucks now. You have to, I mean, I thought I was gonna be getting it right around February, and they put it off to May. I just hope they don't keep putting it off. And the price of that truck is, the total amount is $177,000 with the bed on it. That's when they deliver it, that's, that's what, that's how much it'll cost. $177,002.73 is how much it costs with the bed. The bed is $30,000 plus change. Of course, you can't haul gravel without a bed. That's all of our dump trucks. On our next group is our road graders. These are another, some of our workhorses in the county. We have a 2001 Cat motor grader, a 140 in size. We've got a brand new one, a 2025, that we just got two weeks ago. And it's, right now, it's the, it's the pride of all of our road graders. It's a 140, and we paid, let me get to it. The total amount was, let me find it. The total amount was $308,000. We have, we traded in a 2019 120, and they gave us a trading value of $110,000. So that brought, or the amount that we paid at $198,544. Now, to get on down to the rest of them, we have three more 2019 Cat motor grader, 120 in size. The 120 just simply, quite being honest with you, is not big enough. It just isn't. It doesn't, it doesn't weigh enough. It doesn't have enough horsepower. I've literally seen them load up the blade with a, with a blade full of dirt, and start pushing it, and it slides the machine sideways. I mean, it's just not big enough. These 140s is what we need. But we've got to have the money to buy them, and we can't buy them all in one year. It's just, we just don't have the money for it. So I'm trying to figure out a way, you know, each year or every other year, we buy a new one. And then after we get through the rotation, we can, we can trade it off and buy, give us a new one. And, you know, try to keep these things under warranty where we're not spending so much on parts and repairs. Same way with the dump truck. I worked with Mack to lower the mileage on our, on our warranty to $250,000, because we don't put a bunch of mile, we don't rack up the miles real fast. But what we do, we use them for a lot of years, just like this, for example, this 2007 Mack dump truck has 574,000 miles. So, you know, it's that old. If we, if we get this seven-year, which we do have, we use this seven-year warranty, 250,000 mile warranty, then we can, you know, in seven years, this thing might still be in great shape. We can keep it after the warranty, where we're not, we're not fixing it as much. Or we can, if it's the end of seven years, we can trade it in on another one. But I think that's real nice, that it's real nice for us that they'll work with us on the warranties. So that's our equipment. Any questions about that?
Can you not use the old bed on the new dump truck?
You can, but typically, when you go to auction it off or resell it, you can make more money off a truck that's ready to go.
The bed's beat up by the time you haul.
Yeah. By the time you haul gravel, you haul 12-inch rip, you know, it's, it's pretty much beat up.
It's just metal.
Huh?
It's just metal.
Yeah. And on this bed that we got, I also paid just a little bit extra to get the AR-450 steel, which is armor plated steel. So it's not gonna get beat up near as bad as the old beds get. You know, it'll, it'll hold quite, it'll hold up to quite of an impact. I'm ready to see how that works out. Okay, so we went through that budget. Okay, next on the list is the paved and unpaid county road mileage. We have 134 paved, miles of paved roads in this county. I did not know that when I came in the office. That's, that's a lot of mileage. We also have an unpaved 638 miles. So that adds up, it seems like, I can't remember how much it was, but it was around 770 miles of roads. And if you left the Pike County Courthouse and drove to Chicago, Illinois, that's how many miles it would take. That's, that's a long ways to be all bunched up in a little bit of county that we've got. To go to the price of, of the paved roads, a mile of double chip and seal road down is $99,000. That's a lot of money for a mile of paved road. Now, that's a double chip and seal, you know, that's not a single layer, that's a double, which is what the state requires you when you are, like me, we've got some roads that we ground up, because it's quite simply the base was destroyed. And it's just like a house. If you don't have a good base under a house, what's it gonna do? It's gonna, it's gonna crumble around you. You know, even the Bible talks about building, building a house on sand, it's not gonna hold up. And that's where, that's where I'm concentrating our efforts now, is before we use some of this money to get these bases right, get them set up to where they'll hold up to the log truck traffic as much as possible. Because log truck traffic tears up a lot of our, our roads. But, you know, that's part of our industry. That's part of life around here. We, we, that provides a lot of jobs here. I'm not griping about it. It's just the way it is. But by working on these bases and get them set up, these roads will last longer. Any questions about that? Kind of flying through the lists. All right, now, getting down to our, to our employees. We have, typically, we have five truck drivers going full-time hauling gravel. We have five road graders going full-time. We have three installing culverts, and we usually have one boom hogging full-time. That amounts to 14 employees. Somebody's asked me before, "Why don't you add more employees?" Well, quite simply, where am I gonna pull it from this budget? Where do I want to steal money from in this budget to pay for another employee? Because this, this is not like the federal government that can print money. They, we know that they do that. We can't do that. We have to stick by this bu, this budget, and when we're out of this money, we're shut down. We have to make it last. And by the way, going back to the budget, that, that leftover, that 650 that I named on here, that is our beginning balance. That's what's left over from the previous year. I'm probably repeating myself, but all, it takes all year long for that money to trickle in, to come up with our total amount of budget. So if we don't have something to carry over, we don't have anything to start with. But that's, that's how many employees we've got, and that's, that's what we typically do with them. Now, we're pretty flexible. If somebody needs to, you know, get out in a, in a road ditch and use a shovel, that's what we do. You know, whatever it takes to get the job done is what we do. But now, keep in mind, not all the time are all these employees there. You might have one out on vacation, one might be sick, you know? So it's pretty, it's not very often I have all 14 there every day. Especially this time of year, a lot of people are coming down with flu. So any questions about, anything about that?
Are you gonna keep Jeff Morris next year?
So far.
It's good to know.
Yeah. Plan on it. Jeff's a pretty good worker. I think we've got a good crew. I, I have no, I couldn't complain about the crew if I wanted to, because they, I've got a good crew.
He's a good guy. I know him personally.
Yeah. They work hard, and I think we've, in Pike County, we've always had a good crew. You know, we, we do with, we do with less what we have to.
And most of them local?
Yeah.
They're hired from the interstate or Howard or?
No, typically, we don't. Now, we had one from Howard, but we don't have him anymore. But, but one of the reasons why is, you know, it's getting so hard to find people with CDLs anymore. You know, it's, they, the government's made it so difficult to get CDLs that, you know, I try to find people with CDLs, but you can't always find that. So I instituted a way that we can help people get their CDLs and send them, send them off to, to, and help pay for them, you know? Because a lot of people don't have that much money sitting around. And I do think it's important to, to know that when they get their CDL and the county pays for it, and we make them sign an agreement that they have to work for the county so long, or, or, that way, they can just take another, get their CDL, take another job. That way, I'm protecting the county in the, in that investment. Any questions about any of that? Okay, we're doing question and answer time. Any questions?
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to acknowledge Chris Fuller. He's councilman in the city of Glenwood. Thank you for being here. I appreciate that. We have good representation. And Stacy, I didn't know who you were, but I've definitely spoken to your office. I've only lived in Arkansas for about four years. Your office is one, the most professional office I've ever spoken to. And I just don't, that doesn't come easy for me to say, but every time I've spoken to your office, knowledgeable, professional, and courteous. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Well, just, just so you know, I think we've got the best elected officials in the state, in my opinion.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
We do have two intermodal people from the county back there, too. They said, "I came in."
Y'all wanna acknowledge yourself back there? Y'all want to acknowledge yourself back there?
Eddie, you want to talk about the gravel pit? I know that was brought up the last two hour.
Yeah, so, in, last year, we bought a gravel pit for the county. I, I had approached Warehouser about giving us free gravel because they, they give it to Sevier County, they give it to Howard County. I finally got ahold of a guy in Mississippi and, uh, asked him, you know, could you, could y'all give us some gravel? And he said, "No, we can't." And I said, "How come?" He said, "Because we would have to permit you." And I said, "No, sir, you're wrong. In Arkansas, you do, with counties, are exempt from being permitted." And he said, "No, you're not." Of course, we are getting back and forth. I said, "Yes, sir, we are, I live here." And he said, "Well, we're not giving you any gravel." You know, that's, that's the end of the conversation. So, at that time, the only gravel pit that we had was in Montgomery County. And hauling from all the way up there, all the way down south, just didn't make any sense financially. I mean, it's a long ways to drive, you know, I figured it out, you know, you go to the south part of the county, that's, for one load, you're talking two and a half hours. You know, you talk about the wear and tear on your truck and just the, just the productivity time, you know, you just couldn't get gravel there fast enough to, that the road grader would be setting steel, waiting on the gravel to show up to spread it. So, we started buying some in the south part of the county from Robert Robbins. He was selling it to us for two dollars a yard. We bought enough to make, to pay seventy-five thousand dollars worth that year. So, the next year, I got to looking for a gravel pit of my own. Counties never owned their own gravel pit. I found a gravel pit and bought it for fifty thousand dollars. Now, you look at the seventy-five that we paid the year before, we bought it for fifty thousand, I figured it out how many cubic, uh, yards are in it, and there's enough there for a hundred years' worth.
Wow.
And so, that's when we're hauling in the south, we haul out of that gravel pit, and we haul out, when we're hauling the north, we haul out Montgomery County. And that's really worked out well with us. Now, I actually did get ahold of some, somebody from Warehouser today, and of course, you know, always, always asking people for something, you know, that I, that I can help the county with. I said, "Will y'all, you know, I've talked to this guy in Mississippi, would y'all consider giving us some gravel?" And he said, "Sure, I think we can find you a place." And I said, "He said, 'Where would you like it?'" And I said, "To be honest with you, in the middle of the counties, I'd like to have several of them opened up that we could use all over the county." And he said, "Well, let me look, and I'll, I'll see what we can come up with." So, maybe, crossing my fingers, we can get some gravel from them. And that'll, that'll help us out, too. But anyway, we got that gravel, uh, it's good gravel. We, I would love to have a, uh, a, uh, a screening plan for it to where we could screen some of the big rocks out, but maybe one of these days, we can forward one of those to have set up there, where we could have some really fine gravel to haul. And so, oh, and by the way, that fifty thousand dollars we paid for that gravel was some, was some grant money that the federal government gave us for COVID relief. So, it didn't even have to come out of our county funds.
And that was about half of what the land was valued at?
And I really do appreciate it when y'all were hauling gravel from Montgomery County. You made the roads on my farm go from a one lane to a nice two lane, right down through there.
And that's what we're trying to, we're trying to do that with all the county roads. You know, over time.
It's just Montgomery County, though.
Oh, okay. Well, over time, if you know, if you've drove down our, our county roads, they've slowly gotten narrower and narrower and narrower in deeper ditches. We're trying to widen these roads back out to where they used to be and get the crown back in them because there's two things that make a, make up a good road, period. Doesn't matter what kind of top you have on it, it's compaction or the base, how, how, how much it'll hold up, and water, getting rid of the water, the drainage. If you have those two things, doesn't matter what kind of top you've got on it, you've got a good road. Because let's face it, this chip and seal, or even, even hot mix being laid down, that's like a crust of paint on top of a board. The boards are base, and the, the paint is the, is the finish. And that's all that is. It doesn't hold up any weight. Your base is what holds the weight up. Any other questions? Well, I hope some of you ask questions because there's no dumb questions in this. Any comments?
What is the average employee for the county? What, what do they make per year?
I don't have those numbers in front of me, but it's, I think it's, do you have it, Randy?
Yes, sir. It's different for each department, so it really depends on what department you're in, but let me see. For like, for the road department, a full-time employee makes forty-six thousand, five hundred and four dollars and eighty cents, and eighty cents annually. Road and landfill, they both make the same. Um, courthouse employee, thirty-eight thousand, five thirty-five, seventy-five annually. And then we've got three levels, we've got dispatchers, jailers, and sheriff's departments. Um, your dispatchers make forty-one thousand, four oh seven twenty. Your jailers make forty-two thousand, seven twenty-nine twelve. And your deputies make forty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars.
They work for a week than the other employees, the jail people.
It's a livable wage rate.
Arkansas?
Mm-hmm.
But this area?
The road department works four tens per week, and the, the sanitation department works five eights. There's something else I, I didn't even think about, the, uh, the landfill. Let me bring that up. So, in nineteen eighty-five, there was a one-cent tax passed for the formation of the Pike County landfill. Uh, that's, that's what supports the, the trash, the, the trash trucks, our landfill, you know, the whole sanitation department. Uh, in, what year was it? Twenty twenty-three, my first year, uh, I learned that, that we were paying a lot of money to, uh, to the, now, the trash doesn't stay at our landfill. That's just basically a, a transition station, you know? You can bring it there, it doesn't cost you anything if you live in the county. But we load those bins up and we take it to Howard County, which, over in Howard County, which is southwest landfill. And we paid, we paid to have it dumped over there. Okay? And twenty twenty-three, uh, the total, now, this is, uh, our total tonnage was three thousand, two hundred and eight tons, and it amounted to a hundred and eighteen thousand, thirty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. And that was for, uh, oops.
That was only for half a year.
Huh?
That was only for half a year.
That was only for a half a year, yes. Because what happened, I understood that, that we had some contractors, you know, every, any, anybody in the county could take trash over there and dump it. Contract, roofing contractors, uh, you know, any kind of contractor. I mean, me and my brother did it for years and years. It was allowed to dump on the county for free. When I learned about this, I thought, "Well, you know, it's not really right for a contractor to be dumping on your tax money." You know, why should you pay for the contractor to be dumping? You know, it's, for example, like a, an eighty-year-old woman, you know, had maybe two bags of trash a, a week, she's putting the bill for these contractors to go dump. So, I shut down all the contractors from dumping. And when I did, and I talked to the landfill over there, they said, "Well, you know, we're not going to be checking addresses or IDs, so, you know, it's either all or none, that's just the way it is." So, I just, I stopped everybody. So, if you go and take a load over there to dump, you have to pay for it. And if you go to the landfill in the county, it's, it's free, your tax money pays for that. And so, what was happening, about half of our bill per month at that landfill was, of course, every, every load of trash is different, but we were averaging around fourteen thousand, uh, pounds a week in dumping. Okay? That cut it, the, the half of that is what the contractors were dumping. You know, like shingles, you know, that, that they were pulling off people's roof and going out over there and dumping. So, I contacted Farm Bureau and asked them, you know, "How much do y'all pay, like in an insurance job, how much do you pay a roofing contractor to, 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 uh, tear off and dispose of those shingles?" And on a two-thousand-square-foot house with a six-and-twelve pitch, that amounts to twenty-eight roofing squares. That would amount to fourteen hundred and fifty-six dollars that that roofing contractor was getting paid to dispose of those shingles. But yet, they were sticking that money in their pocket and going, and, and, uh, charging Pike County, uh, citizens that, that amount to dump. And that was about, on average, seventy-five hundred dollars per month. And in my, in four years, if I make it four years, uh, that would amount to about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars that we'll save just by stopping that. Matter of fact, the very first call I made when we stopped that was to my brother, which is a general contractor. And I said, "Scott, can't do it anymore, you know, I'm stopping that." And, uh, he said, "Well, honestly, I can't believe, I can't believe it was ever allowed, you know, to happen to begin with." He said, "I have no problem with that." Now, some, some contractors did. But the way I looked at it, that's the only right thing to, you know, to save this money. And with that money, we bought a roll-off truck and some dumpsters. So, now, we're hauling our own dumpsters at the landfill, taking it to, to the southwest landfill, where also, when we get set up, we've got some more dumpsters on bid that we just took, uh, took the bids, and we're going to have dumpsters that the citizens can, can rent from the county. And I'm trying to get the price as low as I can for a service for the, for the citizens. Just take this money that we saved and put it back into the county and give them another service. So, if you're remodeling a house, you can call us and we'll bring you a dumpster out there, and it should be quite a bit cheaper than you can get it anywhere else. Any questions about that?
I'm glad we got the landfill of the trash collection we got. You know, Montgomery County, you've got to take it to a spot.
Yep.
It's, it's.
It works out real well.
Yep.
You know, and, and I give some calls occasionally, you know, about some of my guys slamming bin lids or, you know, doing something, you know, I had, I have a talk with them. But overall, they do a really good job. I mean, you know, sometimes in snow, we might be a little slow or, um, you know, things happen. We, we actually had one of them get wrecked, uh, a week and a half ago. You probably heard about that. One of our drivers pulled out in front of another truck, and the truck hit. It was, it was my driver's fault, you know, and we're going, we're working with the insurance to get that one replaced. Uh, but you know, sometimes things just happen, you don't want them to happen, but they do. But overall, they, they do a really good job. I'm, I'm pretty proud of our, of our landfill crew. And while I'm thinking about the landfill, if you, I sent the, uh, sent, sent some of these out for a trash schedule for, of the whole county. Now, the cities didn't get them because the cities get their own trash picked up. But if you happen to get one of these and you live in the county and it ended up being smudged like this, that what happened was, when we sent them off to Little Rock for them to sort them and send them out, which you have to do, the, it had a bad belt on the sorting machine, and that's what caused this. So, if you have a bad poppy, I've got some more back here that you can take, or, or if you know somebody that needs one, you know, that lives in the, outside the cities, you know, you can get one and give to them. But I, I thought this might call, this might cure a lot of headaches throughout the county. Because before, I just posted on Facebook or in the newspaper, well, this way, somebody can put it on the refrigerator and have it when they need to refer to it.
Yeah, I know my office feels a lot of trash pickup phone calls, especially after the holidays, I'm sure y'all, I'm sure everybody's office still, but, and, and we feel so bad having to transfer that over to Eddie's course assistant, because she's, there's sometimes she's just telling them, it's just all day long, that we heard her talking about trash. There's a lot of phone calls.
But it's got limits.
It's getting there.
Yeah.
Slowly, it's.
When I first became judge, you know, we, every week, we would fill up, we'd fill up, you think I'm kidding, three of these pages with notes of people's numbers for me to call back and stuff. We're down to about three-quarters of a page now. So, I think we're making headway. One of these days, I may, maybe I'll get to where we don't have any calls. That's, that's when I know I'm doing my job. Any more questions? All right, well, thank you, everybody, for coming, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.